Call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Here.
Brunner.
Here.
Gunderson.
Here.
Nadowski.
Here.
Rasmussen.
Here.
Kemp is also absent.
Uh, pledge allegiance by Lib. Shanny, please. Please join us.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Shanny. Now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting December twenty first.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting December twenty first.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded approved December twenty first. Council meetings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
I'm gonna get you over there. Yeah, hold on.
Frank.
Thank you. First of all, we're trying to get all of our paperwork together because we have a state report to get in by the end of this month. And there's a few discrepancies between us and here. So we need to get that straightened out. We're working on that one. Uh, I'm going to excuse myself a little early because we have to get together at the Christmas get-together at my house and that started about an hour ago, so I want to get back there. And I'm gonna do a little bit of bragging. My son works at Fox up in the Twin Cities.
I'm here.
Okay. Frank's talking right now.
Way back when, because he's in charge of getting all the stuff for the various stores and what have you and how to display it. I said, "You ever get any extra DVDs, let me know because we could use them." So as a surprise for this Christmas, he gave me four and a half boxes and the total value is about five grand. So they're series and everything else and she was happy to receive them. And I'm happy to say it's the second time he's been able to do that. And he's not stealing them. He has his boss's okay's and everything else, um, because they get various copies in order to learn how to do that. So I said, "Just keep us in mind." And he checked with the library up there and they sort of blew them off. And they said, "Well, it's their loss and your gain." So I'll take them anytime that we can get them.
Very good. That's great.
Okay. Any questions?
I got one. I wrote a check out for air conditioners. They're scheduled to come in later.
Air conditioners will be put in as soon as the spring thaw is here and we have a little bit warmer weather. I want the ground to not be frozen. And the whole thing on those air conditioners, I said, "They need to be rewired because I want them rewired above ground." I want no underground where water can seep in and give us more grief again. So that's all understood and, um, they have it on their record and we're on there as soon as they can get at it.
Very good.
We'll replace both of them.
It's kind of what I thought, but cleared it up. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat is on speakerphone.
Okay. Keep listening there, Patrick.
I'm here.
All right, committee report. Public Works, uh, we'll go to Keith.
Yeah, I can do this one. All right. Um, so first I'll make a motion to approve, uh, A fifteen pay request number seven for six hundred and fourteen thousand, uh, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents contingent upon receipt of lien waivers.
Yeah, second.
I'll second.
Either one of us.
All right, I think we all understand that that's pay to bill for buildings going up.
Yep.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, I don't have to roll call that one, no. Okay.
All right. Next I'll make a motion to approve, uh, A fifteen change order number two for fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve A fifteen. Order change two. All in favor say aye.
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 They got just, just a quick note too, on most of the change orders, what you run into is the change order typically we've approved and then the next pay request as the next item typically included that change order. On this one, what you're approving is a change order that's going to come in on next month's pay request. Just a clarification on that.
Yep. Okay, thanks, Pat.
All right. Next up, we have the, uh, so Cedar Corp redid the design based on some of the feedback. Um, I don't know if everybody's been able to see it. I don't know. We got a couple of, you guys were able to see it? You guys have any comments?
They got a copy of it.
Do you have any comments on that or? Okay.
Everybody understand what they did? They narrowed up the green space and eliminated the sidewalk there because there is no other sidewalk out there.
Right.
And gave an extra ten feet of parking space. And from what we understand, the commercial people are approving with that. John is happy with that? Okay?
I got a couple notes too, real quick. Whenever it's appropriate, let me know.
Right. One second, Frank had a comment.
Just a real quick question. Will they be painting that stripe in there for the parking for the trucks? Because that was one of the things we discussed, parking close to the buildings here so they don't impede the parking.
Yeah. Yeah, there is loading zones on here.
Okay.
Yeah, and this one, we did have it. I had them draw that in and then had them clear it so that there's enough space so even if a truck's parked there, you can back up even if it's there, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Pat, you got anything to say on that?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. Um, there's two options there. One is what I believe Mr. Newman had presented in concept at the public info meeting, and that includes two grassy islands in the middle of the parking lot. It changes the footprint of the angled parking. Um, the, the option that they had recommended, I think, gets you twenty-seven parking spots. If you stay with one solid island in the middle of the parking lot, that's gonna get you thirty-five parking spots. And thirty-five is what we had, it's what we have today, or I guess before we started constructing. And there's a couple of items that are up for debate or discussion tonight. One is they did narrow the center island. It was fourteen feet depth, seven inches wide. They cut it down to ten feet and then they took that four foot, seven inches and they expanded the space between the private property and the buildings and the, the parking spot. And I believe it goes from thirty feet to thirty-four and a half. Uh, the, the couple of things that you might want to take a look at are, there are two potential locations for truck loading zones. One would hug essentially the back of the buildings, um, and then behind the brew house and the maytag. The other one would be parallel along the, um, buffer zone between the bank parking lot and the city. And I think when you look at option number two, um, you will see a defined, like a primary zone behind the buildings, but there's also like an optional one along the, the buffer between the, the two parking lots. That's one question, whether, you know, where you should have that. The other question then would be on the green space, you'd be able to shorten that up a little bit more if you felt that thirty-four and a half feet wasn't enough clearance for the trucks to come in behind the buildings. And then the green space along East Alfred Street, um, the, the question there would be whether you want to maintain that as a green space or whether that should all just be paved like it has been today. So I think those are probably the questions. And then just a quick clarif- or comments, and then a quick clarification is, option number two, which is the solid buffer or the solid island, that one has the concrete sidewalk modifications that the mayor had mentioned. On the option three is what they call it, which is what was proposed by the Newmans, that one still has some of the excess concrete that we didn't take out yet. Basically, we just had Cedar update the one, um, the one, uh, option two on the map, but that would apply to any footprint you would want to have with parking. And that's pretty much all I've got.
All right, that's, Patrick, that's pretty much what we just discussed was, uh, we had a half hour wait here, so we got a lot to discuss, but we're looking at the-
Very good.
At the, the narrowest part, the, the limiting the sidewalk and narrowing up the green space and, uh, loading, uh, closer to the buildings rather than over by the bank parking lot.
I would take this green space out of here.
Yeah. And while the sidewalk's in the-
The sidewalk and the green space is still here. I would, I would eliminate that green space because that's just gonna be a hassle.
Would they still plant trees there like it is?
No.
No.
Not at all.
They couldn't, the center though.
The center one.
Center one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Everybody understand it that way now?
I agree with that.
And do we, do we want grass in the center one?
I would say no.
I mean, it costs more upfront to pave it of some sort, but are we gonna be able to mow this?
No.
And then-
Go with river rock?
Go with river rock. And I'm even wondering if, you know-
Colored concrete or decorated, decorative concrete. You can color concrete decorated.
Something, right. Something we're not gonna kill.
Yeah.
You know, and then even with the trees here, I wouldn't mind seeing us just put some sort of, uh, evergreens in there or something because if you look at our trees on Main Street, our history with trees is not-
Not good.
Not good.
No, we're gonna, there's gonna be light posts in there.
There'd be light posts in there, yeah.
And outlets in there for power.
Right.
There's a function of some kind. And while trees or shrubs-
Right.
But others, other surfaces-
Right. All this green should not be grass.
No. Right. It'll be just a problem carrying-
It'll be just a problem, yeah. Somebody's gotta cut it.
It'll be some sort of ground cover, uh, similar to the sidewalk we got decorated out in the Main Street here.
Good.
You can stick, you can stick daisies in there. You can't kill them.
Yeah.
And they look nicer at every, every parking lot in the country.
That's true. You're not gonna kill them.
All right. We don't understand it now?
Right.
Don't vote on it?
Loading zones, Mark?
Yeah, I would want the one behind the building.
Behind the buildings, right?
Right, back the building.
Right.
The parking lot with the bank, that was an optional one.
Yeah, that's optional, yeah.
It wouldn't hurt to, to paint that one in, but obviously, if you don't put this one here, this was some guy in the, in the wintertime making deliveries.
Yep.
You know, especially if the Pine Cafe ever opens up again.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, this is just more realistic.
Yeah.
Yep. And that keeps them in-
They agree too. Okay, got it, Pat? All right?
All right.
Got all those changes?
So that's, uh, option two, correct, Patrick?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, yes, if you're going with the one solid island.
Right. Right.
That's option two. Yep.
Okay. So let's see, ways, where else is it proposed here?
He's trying to make it.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
He's lost.
So I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, drawing and what was discussed for option two.
There you go.
A second?
We got a motion and a second. John Michelle is still happy with it? Still understand it?
You know, if you took the concrete-
Just, just the- Yep.
If you took the concrete sidewalk out and the green space there, that would bring all those parking spots ahead, another three feet.
Right.
Maybe four feet. That would put four more spots in this way also.
Right. That's what we hope to do, make more room there because they won't, they won't lengthen them individual ones. They'll just move the whole works.
On this option here with the two islands.
Yeah.
If you got rid of the green space to the south.
Yes. Yeah, that's what he said.
No.
Yeah, he was looking at the dual.
He was looking at this one here.
No, that's, that's not the one we're looking at.
I'm talking about option three.
Oh, yeah, okay.
If you get rid of the sidewalk and the green space along the road.
Yeah.
It's gonna give you about four more feet. That'll add four more spaces.
It actually won't because we can't go in there. Because that's right away. If you look at when we do this, when we pull those parking spots off, you still have to stay off the curb.
Still have to stay at the legal right of way.
Right.
Wasn't the original recommendation to stripe that as a walk rather than put in the concrete walk?
Right. Yeah. It'll be striped and, yep.
We just figured since there's no other sidewalk there, it probably wouldn't be kinda funky.
All right, go to motion made and seconded. All, all in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
One of the two, two.
Thank you.
Quick questions on that too?
Sure, go for it, Patrick.
Did you guys put in the, in your motion, did you have in there on the alternates to provide, when we get the bids, to also get rates on private property pavement and concrete in case we need to approach private property owners on that?
No, but I can, I can amend my motion if everybody's okay with it, or do I have to make another one?
You can make another one. That'd be fine. But just to make sure that we've got that in there and then, uh, and it's just as it's written on the agenda, I think, so it gives us-
Make a motion to, uh, include bid alternates for agreements with, uh, private property owners, um-
On paving.
On paving.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to include the bids for paving so the property owners know what it is.
What the cost is.
Thanks, Frank.
Thanks, Frank.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Thank you.
All right. Next I'll make a motion to approve Great Lakes TV quote for manhole repair on Second Avenue. For one thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and twelve cents. And this one was, I think, like three thousand less than the alternative bid.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to approve Great Lakes TV quote for Second Avenue. All in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried.
All right. Next I'll make a motion to, uh, upgrade Public Works utility employees to, uh, smartphones. I don't know, Patrick, if you want to elaborate on that quick?
Yeah, just a, a quick note that right now our Public Works employees do have four phones that are on the city cellphone plan. And those phones, I think, are just roughly about three years old. Some of the issues we're running into, they're, they're flip phones. Um, they, three of them do not hold the charge through the workday. And so what we have is employees have to either be plugged into their phone or they have to plug it into the truck or whatever it would be. Uh, and just in general, those phones are going to be due to be replaced or upgraded. Um, what we're looking to do, um, is to upgrade them to smartphones, give them access to their email, which again, they don't have today on their phones. And as part of this motion, it would be part of the next motion. Um, but when we give them access to their email, we would stop the process of the on-call guys swapping phones. And what I mean by that is, at the end of the day, we have one cellphone with one number that is technically the on-call number. And so everybody, depending on who's on call, they swap each other's phones at the end of the day. Um, what it leads to on our end is, again, they don't have email access. Um, we also don't really have a good hold on who's got which phone at any one time. Um, and, and from there, once we assign phones, we would have the issue of dealing with, how do we get ahold of the on-call guy? And that's what the next option is for, that's what the next item is, so I won't go to that yet. But in general, what we're looking at is just upgrading the phones. The quote we've gotten is that it's no more than about fifty to fifty-five dollars per phone per month. And we're also going to be looking into, um, our cellphone plan in general to see if it's possible to get a discount once we add, um, these four cellphones or smartphones if you approve that. And so the, the fifty to fifty-five dollars is a high-end cost per month times four, so that's two hundred dollars. We split it between the water and the sewer utility. Um, and again, it, it's, I'm, I'm expecting the cost is gonna come down when we take a better look at our cellphone plan. But for now, what we're looking at again is just, uh, your blessing to upgrade them to smartphones.
One of the other benefits too is just if there is a unfortunate incident out there, they can take pictures of it.
Sure.
Video. I understand that, so.
Video.
That, that was another reason. It seemed like a good decision.
Yeah, and that happens now and we rely on that quite a bit now and, and we, like I said, we can't really rely on their phones being good all day, so we're, we're kind of hanging in the wind on that a little bit, so.
So do, do we get a second or no?
I'll second it.
All right. Motion made and seconded to upgrade Public Works utility employees' smartphones. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Thank you.
All right. Next I'll make a motion to approve the trial for after-hours emergency call service with Answer Services. And what this is, is, uh, Patrick, I guess, used it in, uh, his former days. And so you have a professional person answering with the message that we can prescribe and then they contact our employees with what the problem is and where the problem's at.
Yep. Yeah, just to add on that too, like I said, the, the good thing we've had about our on-call number being out there is that we always give out one phone number and people are able to call our emergency guys when they need to. Uh, the problem is when we assign those cellphones, we're gonna have an issue of, you know, what number do we give out? One of the things that I think that even Mr. Nadowski had suggested was, would we be able to program into our city hall cell, or our city hall phone system, an after-hours option for people to go out? Um, you know, where they would call into city hall and automatically get out to our on-call guys? That's something we'll look into, but for now, the next three or four months, we're gonna be in the temporary office and it would require us to install a brand-new phone line into the temporary building that we're going to be moving out in three months. Um, and so with Answer, they have a proposal, their base fee is fifty dollars a month, which again, we would split between the water and sewer utilities, so it's twenty-five dollars a month out of each. There's no commitment though. So if in three months we use this and we get by for the time we need now, if, you know, we can have the opportunity to continue it if it works well, but if it's not working well or if we have a better alternative with our new office, we could cut this and, uh, we wouldn't have any commitments to stay with them. Uh, but again, I, I did, uh, have experience with this in Ashwabanon and what they did was, they had their whole system at four-thirty, they would flip over to the Answer Service. And when you called the Answer after hours, it sounded like they worked for the village. So they would answer the phone, they would say, "Village of Ashwabanon, this is," um, you know, whoever it would be. And then they do a lot of the filtering of the calls and then they dispatch out, uh, if there's an emergency, they could call our police, they could call me, they could call anybody on call. Uh, and if it's a routine call, they can direct the people to call back in the morning too or call back whenever we're open. So again, with, with little commitment, I, I think it is something that's gonna get by for the next three months. And in a couple months, we can reevaluate whether we have a better option or whether we continue with this. So I'd appreciate, uh, your consideration for that.
Okay. Thanks, Pat. Motion made and seconded?
I think it's made. I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Keith for you.
All right. Uh, make a motion to approve C fifteen pay request number six for Emil for one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents contingent upon receipt of lien waivers.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve C fifteen pay request number six. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Next I'll make a motion to approve, uh, C fifteen pay request owner-direct purchase materials for one hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and six dollars.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to pay C fifteen pay requests for direct purchase materials. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Thank you.
All right. Next I'll make a motion to, uh, contribute seven hundred dollars to Fire on Ice for two thousand sixteen.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to make a contribution to Fire on Ice, seven hundred dollars. All in favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carried. Thank you.
All right. Next I make a motion to disallow, uh, Buckhold's claim based on our insurance carrier's recommendation. Any questions on that?
I can give you, yeah, I can give you a quick heads up on that. It is a fall, there's a claim that's been filed with the city. Um, and a, an individual had slipped and fallen right where their driveway on West Wisconsin meets the road. And they had filed a claim for medical bills and then they had also put in for, um, some damages. And, and what I had done is we sent that to our insurance carrier not to consider, you know, a claim or, or officially filing a claim, but what we're able to do is file with our insurance carrier to get a recommendation on what to do. And I believe you have two letters in your packet. One is the letter that the insurance company is sending to us and the other letter is the letter that they had sent to them already. Uh, but basically what our insurance carrier is recommending is that the city council disallowed the claim, but in lieu of a disallowance, we do have a medical payments component to our insurance coverage and they would be offering to reimburse for their medical expenses provided that medical bills and things like that could be, um, provided. Now that part of it is more on our insurance end, uh, in a relationship with the claim. And on our end, what the insurance company is recommending is that you disallow the claim as a matter of procedure.
Okay. That makes very good sense to me. I read the claim too, so.
Yeah. And it's, it's definitely, it's an unfortunate, uh, fall and it's, it's not anything that, that we don't feel bad about it. It's not a good thing. And, and we are taking a look at that roadway, uh, to see if there's any asphalt that we could cut out, patch it up a little bit better to, to help that situation. Um, and I think even at the committee, they had rec, they had, uh, mentioned that too. It's, it's, uh, again, the action is something that's recommended by the insurance company as, as a procedure.
Okay. Got a motion and have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to disallow Buckhold's claim. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, next I'll make a motion to approve checks three one nine three four through three one nine nine five totaling seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty cents and the, uh, monthly financial statements.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded is pay the total checks and the bills, uh, it was all in your packet. Any questions? Roll call.
Anderson?
Aye.
Appleby?
Aye.
Rasmussen?
Aye.
Adoxy?
Aye.
All aye.
Motion carried, thank you. What are we gonna do about police and fire, Patrick? Or Jerry, what do you wanna do?
Patrick, since we are-
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Since we once, the committee once before made a recommendation on the Narcan policy, contingent upon the, uh, approval of our lawyers, and now that there is the approval, can we just make the motion now?
So here, here's the very interesting, yeah, here's the interesting thing we have. It's up to you guys to determine what you wanna do. And the way that we had it, um, noted on the agenda essentially puts out there on the agenda what it is. It's just a matter of your, your opinions as a council and as the mayor on whether it's something that you feel good about moving forward with. I think all of these items, same for the Gold Cross agreement, we have, well, actually all of them, we've discussed that committee at some point. It's just that here, we thought we would have a special, or a council meeting or committee meeting right before, and essentially have the same recommendation, so it, I would defer to your wishes as a council on how, how you wanna discuss these things. But I would agree, Nick, though, that you have had, in, in general, and in, you know, you've had the discussions that you would have had you had a committee meeting before this tonight. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me.
Yeah.
I'd like to hold-
The only thing I would say is that you hold the Gold Cross agreement, because there, there's a couple things that popped up that we do need to review yet. So I would ask that you do not act on that one tonight.
I was gonna hold the ballistic vest one also, until we can look at it and talk about it in committee. But the Nar, Narcan one, I figure we've already discussed that. So, I'm gonna make a motion-
I'd agree with that.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the Narcan policy.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Narcan policy. You all heard it, all understood it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
What's the hangup on the rest of?
Not.
Um, the, Mike hasn't had a chance to, uh, he wasn't at that meeting. And so he asked it, that we be able to discuss it in committee before we vote on it.
And there, there's no rush.
There, there wasn't any, um-
There's no urgency, it's been ordered, and they pay for it first, it's just a-
Right, it's a reimbursement anyway, so it was, it wasn't as pressing as, as the Narcan policy.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have for committee.
Next, public health.
Whatever.
No action for council.
Rec committee.
No action for council.
Public property. Scott?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the city administrator to negotiate the sale of land to Agupur for a minimum of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
I think we've all discussed that more than once. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I also make a motion for approval of the city to purchase property on four twelve Old Mill Street for eighty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
And that's another thing we discussed, be a good plus for us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then, yeah, just, thank you very much on that, and then just a quick note on that. Uh, we've had a tentative closing date for Old Mill Street, uh, contingent on your approval, which, thank you for that tonight. Uh, we would be looking at a closing on Friday. So as of Friday, uh, that would be the city proper, just an FYI.
Very good, thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
Heard of.
There you go.
Planning commission has no action for the council and new business. Approve operator's license for Judy Renee Katnack and Jan Gensler of Waigah Senics and Isabel Shoffner of Waigah Travel Plaza. May I make a motion and second it, please?
I'm making a motion to move, approve all the licenses you just listed.
And I'll second it.
Motion made and approved, seconded, approve the license. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, thank you. Approve class B retailer's license for Fire Nights for the snowmobile races.
So moved. Second.
Yes, motion made and seconded. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. And comes the mayor's report, and I guess what I wanna say is tonight, I'm really happy that you guys decided to purchase this property. When you look at the layout of it, for a very little picture, I can picture a lot of wonderful things happening down there. The more I look at it, the more I went down there a couple times and parked down there and looked at it. Yeah, we got a gem down there, and it's gonna be a big plus for us tonight. Thank you very much for doing that. Administrative report, you got anything, Patrick?
Uh, I do, real quick, we've been, the, uh, we've been working on the financial software upgrade, and we did run P-roll this last week for the first time in the new system, which was our cool-
Oh, he is breaking up.
How'd payroll work out, Becky? Okay.
In the new system, we're hoping that the utility billing in February or January service is going to be, uh, also running the new system. And, uh, we're moving on from there. We do have, uh, quite a few things that are coming to a head, a lot of big projects that I think as a council, you know, we've been working on for at least the two, three years that I've been with the city. Uh, a lot of them are these little hand transactions, um, but I, I do thank you guys on your votes on that, and, uh, I, I would agree with what the mayor had mentioned. I think that getting that property is going to be a very, uh, good benefit to the city, but strategically, it's going to help us quite a bit as we look for space, uh, to try to keep some of our facilities down in the treatment plant area. Because, uh, the ongoing projects we have involve the potential to expand our treatment plant even further than what we're doing now. On top of that, uh, the city hall and the treatment plant construction is moving along real well. Uh, we are looking at, on February eighth, um, that would be the next finance and public works night, and we're looking at about four-thirty or five o'clock, we would have a city hall tour. And what we're thinking is that the stairs should be installed where we could open it up basically to anyone that would be, uh, willing to come through. Uh, right now, we've been working with a lot of ladders, um, and again, since it's an active construction site, you know, uh, Emil's looking at uh, reducing their liability wherever they can, uh, but, uh, construction is progressing very well. I think for you guys, many of you haven't been in the building since we moved out, and I was just, uh, touring yesterday with, uh, the site superintendent, and I get an idea that you guys are probably gonna be blown away, uh, by the progress. And again, we're only about three months away from, uh, completion, and we're looking at moving in probably in the middle of April. So, that's about all I've got.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Police chief?
Thank you for approving the Narcan policy. You've, I'm sure, saved at least one life. Everybody's been talking to me over the weekend about heroin and the drug problem, and what should we do, and what can't we do. Well, we're limited. This is big. If that situation happened again, we'd be able to save somebody's life. And we all know there's a big problem out there, but it's bigger than us. We can't fix it just ourselves. Anyway, the last month was relatively quiet and a number of complaints, but relatively, uh, complaints were heavy. We had two sex offenses, child abuse, batterying an unborn child, a couple felony drug cases, and those take a lot of staff. Uh, the complaint I took on Friday down here, which you've all heard about, required five different people to come in. So when you see that, just don't hesitate to ask and say, "What's going on?" This one kinda popped and dropped him right on Main Street, and everybody kinda saw it, but if you're just wondering why there's, um, extra people working, just all you have to do is ask. And the, uh, Dodge Charger was here briefly, and that was gone. It's in Madison getting all of its equipment installed, so it's pretty sharp. That's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Set the meeting calendar for next month.
Yep.
Uh, well, the only thing I have so far would be Public Works and Finance, both set for February eighth. Public Works at five-thirty, Finance at six-thirty. That is also the same day that you just heard Pat say about the city hall tour at five o'clock. And then council would be February fifteenth at six-thirty.
Real quick, doll, I got it all.
So, what do we need? Do we, uh, another rec? I'm assuming yes on police?
Police and rec on the ninth?
Ninth?
Yeah. Rec first.
Nick, I won't be here.
You won't?
Any other days that week, at Thursday or Friday work?
I can make Thursday work.
Eleventh would work.
Eleventh will work for you?
Yep.
Okay, we're making the eleventh then.
Eleven, okay. Rec at six, police tomorrow.
That'll be it to you? No? Jenny?
Um, I guess it's gonna have to be.
It doesn't have to be.
Can we please change it? My birthday's from Friday, and my husband's taking me out to eat on the eleventh, 'cause he's gotta work on-
Where's your sense of sacrifice?
I'm sorry, I've sacrificed a lot lately.
When would you like it then?
Well, whatever, if there's another day that would work, I'm open, I just, not that-
Catch you have your birthday on Sunday instead of-
The first week, I'll be in Milwaukee at OSHA.
Can we do something on the tenth?
I will be here. I'll be at training.
Well, I guess we'll have to split them up then. Let's, let's just do that.
Well, you know what? I come back at, uh, we'll get done at noon on Wednesday. Wednesday will work.
You sure?
Are you sure?
I'm positive.
You wanna think about it?
Nope.
Okay, we'll do Wednesday then.
All right.
What time are we doing that?
Rec at six and-
If we need one? Is there a problem if we sneak it in between Public Works and Finance on the eighth?
What's that?
Of public property, just in case we need one.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that'll work.
No, I'm not on it, so, sure. Worked last time.
Do we need an ordinance or a plan permission?
Uh, can we wait? I need to touch base with you with stuff first before we-
Make a cameo on the camera too.
Yeah, okay, so can we wait on that?
Sure.
Hold ordinance until, I got some more homework I wanna do before we sit down, and I haven't had time.
Sure.
Okay, follow them.
We, just, uh, an FYI, not that these next two weeks without any meetings, we need to get together at all, but there's a chance that you might wanna have a special council meeting, or consider a special council meeting. And at that meeting, uh, potentially talk about the city hall progress, and there had been a claim that had been filed. Um, and there's, there's a chance that city attorney's gonna advise that he sits down with you guys. Probably just does an update on that in case it proceeds to litigation, just to keep you in, in the loop. But it, it, it might be required before February eighth, or maybe the night of February eighth, um, which is also the night of the tour for city hall. It's also the night of two or three committees, so, you know, we might, not that we wanna throw four or five meetings all in a row, but for that item, it might be worth it. I'll, uh, I'll work with, uh, Cedar and with the city attorney on how pressing that is, whether it's something that can wait till the eighth, or if it's gonna be maybe like next week. But, um, touch base with you guys on that, give you a heads up. Just a, an FYI for now.
Okay, okay, good. Any motion to adjourn?
Any motion to adjourn?
Second, third, fourth?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, people.